All right, everyone. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you for all coming. If you could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Molly, if you'd be kind enough to help us with the roll call?
Yep, other person, Henry, here. Other person, Schaefer. Other person, Schaefer.
I see him.
I see you. Via Zoom.
I'm thinking of mute.
Oh, are you on mute, Molly? I am green. Can you hear me now? Everybody else can hear me.
On the Zoom, are you on mute?
So I don't, I talk through my mic.
The Zoom window shows that City of Delafield Police is on mute.
Yeah, I have to be on mute.
I don't hear anything.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Other person, Schaefer. Other person, Valdi. Here. Other person, Bremer. Other person, Isner.
Here.
Mayor Atwell.
Present.
Administrator, Hefner. Feeding in, in the back, Schaefer. Okay.
Good. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item number four, public hearing. For a hearing for public comment on the proposal to vacate and discontinue a portion of the public right-of-way for Smythe Lane and Fairland Lane and certain alleys. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the public hearing? Anyone that would like to speak to the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to number five, approval of the following meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve or amend the minutes?
Move to approve March 20th minutes for the council.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
All in favor, vote aye.
Passes? Okay, we'll move on to number six, City of Delafield citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that would like to speak during citizens' comments? For anything on the agenda or off? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Okay, let's go on to special order of business. Seven A, what we've all been waiting for, the majority of us here, right? Ceremonial swearing in and pinning of City of Delafield Police Chief Landon Nyron.
I'm gonna have you guys stand here.
Try to get that, try to get the sign blown out from.
Hello? Alrighty, I, Landon Nyron.
I, Landon Nyron.
Having been appointed, the City of Dela-- oh, wait, this is for you. Let's start that again. Am I turned on? Am I turned on? Can you, okay. I, Landon Nyron.
I, Landon Nyron.
Having been appointed the City of Delafield Chief of Police.
Having been appointed the City of Delafield Chief of Police.
Hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, we'll move on to seven B, ceremonial swearing in and pinning of City of Delafield Police Lieutenant Ryan Jacobs.
You can get a cheat sheet also? All right, can I, me?
I suppose I need to.
Yep, yep. All right, I, Ryan Jacobs.
I, Ryan Jacobs.
Having been appointed the City of Delafield Police Lieutenant.
Have been appointed the City of Delafield Police Lieutenant.
Hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, guys. No, just some, even though. All right, we'll go on to seven C, presentation by Fire Chief Matt Fennig regarding a proposal from the Wisconsin Policy Forum to perform a cost analysis study for Lake Country Fire and Rescue, followed by council questions, discussion, and action on proposed $2,000 cost share for the study from the City of Delafield. Welcome, Chief.
Yes, thanks, Son. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, cool. Thank you, Mayor, and Tom, and all the council members that are here, and Mark, for being here via Zoom. Want to first say thank you to all the citizens of Delafield for their overwhelming support of the referendum. I think it speaks bounds to how our community supports public safety, so thank you to everyone out in TV land for that. Before you, there's a memo, and then there's a proposal. Everyone had a chance to see it and review it as part of the packet. I have additional copies in case anyone needs it. But basically, you know, as everyone knows here, the work of the referendum is a part of many steps in this process that we've been on for about the last year now. And one of the things that became apparent is that through all the discussions we have is that there may need to be some outside assistance in that of the form of looking at the funding formula and taking into account what's fair and moving into the future as we move into the next steps of these discussions. So I think, as Matt said, I think we're in the fifth inning, so we gotta keep moving through to the end of the game here. So, having said that, we did reach out to the Wisconsin Policy Forum to first start to solicit some help as to what that would look like. So in February, we brought a proposal to the administrator group. So we get together with all seven of our administrators four or five times a year, or more frequently if we need to. And in February, we talked at the administrator level about the possibility to bring in some outside help to facilitate some of these discussions as we move forward, because the last thing that we want to do is get into September and October and have those couple months that we've had last year. So we want to try to get ahead of that. And speaking to some of my colleagues, the Wisconsin Policy Forum is very highly recommended as a potential that, a group that would facilitate these types of discussions. So at the February administrator meeting, like I said, we talked to the administrators about it. Seemed to be pretty good support from the administrator level to move forward. At that time, I had a rough cost estimate for the administrators of $21,000. And the administrators asked that we get that in a formal quote and a project description, which is part of the packet that you have in front of you. So that formal quote did come in substantially less, so it's at $14,000. So again, we met in March with the administrators to kind of further discuss that plan. And at that time, the administrators thought that it would have been fair to split that by seven, not according to the formula, but just rather by seven, so everyone would pay $2,000. So that's where it sits as of today. I will also say that since talking at the administrator level in February, I've been to a number of meetings just like this in the other communities. And it has some support. Support from the Neshota, support from Sheneka last week, they passed it at their village board meeting. But it has some questions from some other communities, so it's not unanimous as we sit here today. So I just want to be fully transparent with that, so everyone is aware. It is not on one particular community's agenda and hasn't been placed on it, so it may sit for a couple months as they work through it internally. So with that, I'll pause, and I know you guys have a stacked agenda, so any questions for me or anything I can help you with?
Chief, what are the concerns from this other community?
Matt, I really don't want to speak for them. You know, it's their, as you know, in sitting through the board meetings, there are a couple of communities that out there that think that the formula was established, and that's the formula that they want to stick with. So I don't want to put exact words in other communities, but it's along those same lines.
Matt, besides Sheneka and the Shota, did any of the other communities take formal action on this proposal?
No, it was on the Town of Genesee's agenda last week Monday. They had it on for discussion, but they could not take action on it.
I'll just make a comment, and that is, I think a lot of the, I'm actually kind of confident that, I shouldn't say kind of. I'm confident that a lot of the support that the referendum received was because of how straightforward the questions were and how the information was shared directly. And one theme that came up several times with different people I talked to was the question of equity. And I think that this will go a long way to make sure that a third-party evaluation, I think, is a good step toward assuring people that that's what it is. And, because we've got a, you know--
Oh, you're gonna have to, that has to say open, it's an open meeting.
Single-user, single-fee type approach that the city took. And not everyone took the same exact approach on how they approached the budget issue, but I think that kind of is something that would translate well with the other six communities. You know, how does it compare, how does a user in the City of Delafield compare with, you know, a similar customer in Genesee and Village of Kamak Lake and Sheneka? I think that's a question that this will help answer. And how has that been impacted based on how we entered into these different mergers going back 12 years to the ones we've just entered in the last two? How does the change in the increase in the funding that's required impact that same user in the different communities? Because there's some dynamics there that need to be explored, and I appreciate you taking the initiative to do this. I think it's important.
Thank you.
From the small amount of research that I did on the studies that WPR did on other communities, North Shore, the Oak Creek merger, the Mequon, they do present a variety, not a huge variety, but there are alternate funding proposals out there that were brought forward, and I found that interesting as well. You know, revenue generated in the community goes back to the community, things of that nature. So, yeah, I think I would agree with Tim's statements as well.
Yeah, I mean, by far and above, they are, I would say, the frontrunners. And people that have studied fire and EMS, they know very well. I shouldn't be real shocked to anyone, they're working on a number of projects just like these. From, the majority of the work, from what I understand, they're doing right now is with larger communities that have contracts with smaller communities for EMS-type areas, so they'll cover a township for EMS. And as the large community, their costs have increased, they need to pass those costs on to the end-users. And as everyone has lived through over the past year, those are very hard discussions, so they've been doing that facilitation.
You know, one of the things I didn't ask at our fire board meeting that I'm gonna ask now is, I don't know if Lake Country Fire and Rescue is unique in terms of consolidated fire departments, in terms of our population density, our geography. Do you have any idea whether Wisconsin Policy people have done this type of analysis for a similar size? Because I know they've done North Shore and Oak Creek, and those are more, those are dense communities. I know they've done Mequon, and that gets a little bit more rural. But I don't recall seeing anything that was Delafield, Neshota, Sheneka-sized communities. Very rural, very little, small little hamlets.
So from the conversations I've had with Rob Henkin, who is the gentleman that put the proposal together, they've worked with small to large to mega-size agencies. I think, I can't speak 100% to their resume though, Matt, but I believe that they did the South Shore, there was a very large South Shore study done, which was the Caledonias, Mount Pleasance, those of the like. And that was done a number of years ago. So, again, I don't have their exact resume in front of me, but this gentleman and this group are very familiar. He actually indicated that they could start their own consulting group just to do fire and EMS, because this is everywhere right now, so.
Does this, would this need to be approved by all of the communities in order to go forward? What happens if one doesn't agree to it?
At this juncture, I mean, the agreement, the way the agreement is, is that kind of everyone has to agree to even, if you're talking about really changing the funding formula, everyone's gonna have to agree to it.
But they wouldn't necessarily have to agree with the study.
Correct. The study is non-binding. I think that's--
We could approve the study, and if one community didn't approve it, our cost for the $14,000 would just increase by a few hundred dollars.
The one thing is that, you know, it seems strange, we're in April, but these things take time. And that's why we're here in April, and why we started talking about it in January. So this is, by all estimation, a four-to-five-month process to get through, to do the study and to really get the data that everyone wants to see, which puts us right into everyone's favorite time of the year.
It's mine. I love it. I think anything worth doing is worth doing well, and this is what you're trying to do, is you're trying to give a systematic, data-driven way or map to move forward. So I think it's excellent idea, and it's not an expensive proposition at all.
And my expectation, we would see similar, a similar presentation as the ones that I have already, that they've done in the past.
Yep. The way it's laid out at the moment, Matt, is that it's really in two parts. The first is to complete the study, and then get that study back to the players. And then, once you've had time to review that, ample time to review it, then to do, I'll call it, meeting facilitation, where the discussion is facilitated by Rob, and, you know, go on back and forth, and this idea and that idea, and then take a couple weeks and meet again, you know, go through the data, go back and talk to about it, your respective council and board levels, and then hopefully, you know, keep working back and forth till we get an amicable solution.
We see action as an option on this discussion point, so.
Before you do that, so just being devil's advocate here, what if only three of the seven communities agreed to pay the $2,000? What are we gonna do?
Then I would put it, if only three of the seven agreed to do it, then, I mean, apparently it's gonna be a done deal, and it'll have to go back to the administrators to sit down with the mayors and people and really start discussing it outside of using the Wisconsin Policy Forum, so however that, you know, facilitation needs to happen. That is the interest that I did hear from one community. Again, I don't feel comfortable speaking for specific communities, but in the interest of getting this thing to the finish line in September is, we need to sit down and we need to start having discussions. And they didn't necessarily think that having this data would be worthwhile, so.
So if you're gonna make a motion, you might want to include something along those lines.
I understand, well, I was gonna tackle it a different way, see if anyone approves. I'll make a motion to approve the study from WPF on the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Cost Allocation Study for the proposed $2,000 cost share from the City of Delafield not to exceed a potential cost of $3,200.
One second.
And my reasoning is, if somebody wants to try to apply the current cost formula to the current budget for $7,000, I think that gives us enough buffer to cover it. That makes sense.
So if it passes tonight, and as the mayor mentioned, only three out of seven communities pass it, or let's say four, we still would move forward with the study?
I'm saying, I approve, I'm motioning to suggest that if it seems beneficial to do it, we've already approved up to $3,200, knowing that we're committing, you know, the ask was $2,000, I'd expect to just pay that. But if one or two drop out, or someone wants to do something else with the formula to make Delafield pay more, like we have in our current funding formula scenario, $3,200 covers it. I just want to give the chief latitude to go ahead with the study, if he can make it work for that. But if it's just two people, or whatever, I mean, if it seems like it's a fool's errand, don't spend the money. But I'm just giving some latitude to say, let's not have to go through another approval step, leave it on the table for the others.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Mark, do we have a vote for you on that?
He voted aye. I could see his mind.
Okay, ready to go? We good, Molly?
He typed in a-okay.
All right, seven C, we did that. Seven D, presentation by Phil Cosson? Senior, did I say it right?
Cosson.
Cosson. Senior Municipal Advisor with Ellers, the City Finance Advisor of the pre-sale report for the City of Delafield, Wisconsin, $2,155,000 general obligation promissory note, Series 2023A, to fund the city's 2023 capital budget projects. Phil, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Good to be with you again tonight. You have two documents in front of you. The first is the pre-sale report. I'll spend a little bit of time going through that with you, just to kind of catch everybody up, and talk a little bit about tax impact analysis, work that we've been working on with the city staff to make sure that some of the goals of the council, keeping the debt service levy relatively flat, are met. And then I'll talk a little bit about the process again, just to keep, again, everybody, it's not something you do on a daily basis, but you see me about every year, every other year. Talk a little bit about process. And then the second document is the resolution that we're looking for passage tonight, and it gives us authorization to proceed with the financing. And that was prepared by the city's bond council, which is Hush Blackwell, has been the city's bond council for a while now. So the pre-sale report I'll walk through in a little detail, the, this is notes, general obligation notes, like you've done in the past. And if you recall, I've talked about notes versus bonds. This will be a 10-year financing, which will kind of match the asset life of most of the assets. But we do have some equipment pieces in here as well that, working with city staff, they wanted to make sure we're amortizing it a little bit quicker. So we built that into it, like a squad car and a few things like that. So want to make sure we're maturing principal fast enough to absorb that asset life of the pieces of equipment as well. Um, notes is beneficial for the city because if a project cost comes in a little bit higher or a little lower, you can move the money, uh, between the projects that were part of your budget. Uh, when you issue bonds, it's very static. You have, you have kind of silos where you have to spend the money. So, uh, notes gives you that flexibility. So what we're proposing is what we've done the last couple of issues here, and that is a parameter sale, um, uh, for the projects that are identified. So there's three components of the projects. There is, uh, general levy projects that were part of your budget, $1,657,000 worth of projects, uh, storm sewers, 112,000, and sanitary sewer projects of 320,000, all being a part of this one issue. You'll see in the document, we have three different amortization schedules by purpose so that when it comes time to budget, you go through that process, you know what portion of the annual debt service, uh, from this issue is, should be attributed back to storm and to sewer, uh, and not, so it's not all on the general levy. Uh, this again, as notes, you have plenty of borrowing capacity, uh, you have about $81 million of borrowing capacity, uh, at this time. This, with this issue, you'll be at approximately $15 million of outstanding, uh, debt. The majority still is these facilities that were built a number of years back, uh, but you have $81 million.
2028, that's the year we.
That's when you mature those completely. That's correct. That's correct. Um, so you're all using at this point, with this issue, about 16% of your borrowing capacity. A 10-year note with an eight-year call, uh, is what we're proposing, meaning you can prepay the debt, refinance it potentially down the road, uh, with no penalty. This will take, we'll go through the same rating process with Moody's and, um, we'll schedule that. I think we have it scheduled already in about two weeks. Uh, you're double A2. I don't expect much will change, um, pretty static. Um, I know you've had some more growth or you're, you're projecting more growth. I talked to the mayor earlier tonight, a little more growth coming, which is great news for net new construction under levy limits and those kind of issues. And you've gone through kind of this referendum process, uh, that the chief was just talking about as well. Uh, we, um, what we're proposing again is to make sure that this is, um, we'll take bids on May 10th, which is not a normal city council night. Uh, we'll take bids on May 10th and then we'll have the information for the final results of the sale that will come back to you, um, the following, uh, council meeting night. So you'll have that information. The parameters are laid out, um, in this document. Uh, they're pretty loose, uh, in a good way, uh, when I say that. We have a not to exceed amount of $2,155,000. Um, we have some constraints around how underwriters and banks can bid on the bonds, uh, giving them kind of maximum flexibility. Uh, we have a maximum true interest cost of 5%. Um, we, we sold a couple of issues today and for other communities and last week, we're expecting to see closer to 3%. Uh, so we have plenty of, of room there. Then, um, like we've been seeing, we expect we'll probably see what's, what's called a premium bid, uh, where they actually provide you with some more dollars than, than you request so that they can mark up the bonds in the secondary market. And by allowing us the ability to, to move maturities around a little bit, uh, that'll enables us, uh, the ability to meet those, those, with the goal of not having your, your debt service levy increase. Uh, so we have some flexibility in, in the parameter, allowing us to move maturities around a little bit as well. In the document, uh, we have a, a number of spreadsheets. I'm more than happy to walk through those if you want, but I'll just kind of give you a big picture of what it is. On page number seven of this, we actually have your sizing, how we got to the $2,155,000. I gave you the components already. We have your base case, meaning where are you today before you do any capital borrowing? We have the breakdown by levy, sewer and storm. Uh, so you have that, uh, allocation breakdown. And then we have a tax impact analysis, which takes into account your existing obligations, makes some projections on, on growth, uh, in the community, uh, takes into account projections for this issue with the offsetting revenues from storm and sanitary sewer. To get to a net debt service levy number that we are, uh, attempting to kind of keep flat. And our projections, even at a little higher rate than where we expect, show that, uh, with the use of some debt service, uh, funds that you have at hand, we have the ability to hopefully kind of see a slight, very slight reduction, uh, even, even though you're taking on this issue. And that's still maturing in over 10 years. So we're not pushing all the debt in the back years. We're maturing the debt pretty level. So we expect, uh, with rates coming in, hopefully a little bit better than we're showing, that your debt service levy number will be a little bit less, uh, for next year's budget, even with this issue, uh, being, um, brought on board. I talked already about your borrowing capacity. You have plenty of capacity going forward. In here also, we have a bond chart, uh, that shows kind of what's been going on over the last three years. It looks pretty gruesome when you look at it, just, uh, from a one-year snapshot, uh, but we've seen a big rally in the bond market over the last, um, about two to three, uh, about two months, uh, we've seen a significant, significant drop in the bond market. We are seeing 10-year notes as high as four to four and a quarter percent just two months ago, and that's dropped back to about 3%. So, uh, we think it's a pretty good time to be issuing. Uh, hopefully things have stable, stabilized a little bit, uh, in the, in the bond market. Um, this seems to be a pretty good direction with Fed policy now, although I say that with a little smirk.
Are you sharing the actual result of the crystal ball?
I don't, I'm not, no, no magic wand or crystal ball here, but I think there's, hopefully you're going to see a little bit of stabilization. Um, so we expect to come back with a little bit better, uh, results than what we're showing here. So that's a kind of big picture, uh, what we're trying to accomplish here, what the goals are from staff to make sure we don't see a, an increase in, in the debt levy. And, um, and then the resolution again, tonight gives us permission to pursue, uh, the financing, uh, prepare the necessary documents, go through the rating process, uh, and then take bids on May 10th, uh, from different banks and underwriters, once the official statement is prepared.
Sounds good. Any questions?
I'll just make a comment. This is more exciting than usual. I should say more dynamic. We've, we were in a nice long rut of, uh, low to no change for a long time, so, um, appreciate where we're hitting here and all the different, um, how, how you're going to market with the different options so that we can kind of work with who's investing and, and hit the numbers that we need to hit, so. Um, yeah, we'll see, right?
I, I enjoyed those long year, a couple of years of lows, low, no growth, no interest rate increases. That was nice.
The days of free money to borrow.
Days of free money are over.
Warned and threatened with over 2% bond issuance, uh, a couple of years ago, and we hit under one.
Yes.
So let's, just, that's a target, is all I'm suggesting.
It's good to have targets.
No, this is good. So I, I'll make a motion to pass resolution number 2023-06 to authorize the issuance and sale of the bonds not to exceed $2,155,000 general obligation promissory notes.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
All right, Henry?
Aye.
Schaefer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move down to eight, this consent agenda, seeing nothing on the consent agenda. We'll move to nine, board committees and commission reports. I assume no licenses, so we'll move on to B, planning commission.
Okay, we've got, uh, three items here to, um, discuss. I'm trying to think, yeah, we did have a plan commission meeting since our last council meeting, um, a couple of topics note there. There was an application for a tobacco and, um, vape store up on, um, near the Pick and Save that was denied. There was an application for a tattoo parlor, I shouldn't say, I don't know if it's a salon, just north, south of the library here that was approved. Um, that was our second visit to council, uh, to the plan commission and, um, a couple other, uh, new businesses coming in for new ideas and new, new permits and stuff. So just look at the notes, um, things are happening here and we'll see a lot of new faces in stores this summer. Um, the other items that we need to, to work on tonight are just some follow-ups to, um, some longstanding proposals that have been in front of us, and these are details that are, that are following up other things we've already approved, um, that received, uh, recommendation from the plan commission to the council. The first is for, uh, 1307 Genesee Street. Um, this is the Miller Marriott, uh, development in the middle of St. John's. If you'd like to come up in case there's questions, um, but really what this is, is a, uh, approval of the developers' agreement. We've already approved certain things about the plotting of the land and the zoning. Um, this is for the Beacon Hill subdivision. I don't know if you'd like to add anything else other than that?
Um, no, I think the developers' agreement, we're very happy with it. I'm excited to get going. Um, I think we're good to go.
All right. I don't know if, I don't know if there's questions on it, but if everyone's familiar with what we're talking about, it's, is the, uh, development closer to Highway C than the golf course? So with that, I'll make a recommendation to accept the, um, uh, plan commission's recommendation and approve the developers' agreement to accommodate the single-family subdivision known as Beacon Hill and Dellafield.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions, passes.
All right, so we got.
One of the things that we have talked about was the, the sign easement. Does that need to be addressed at all or does that?
The sign easement is later on the agenda.
Okay.
Under new business.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, item.
I just want to point out, there was a verbal mouth from Mark, aye, but we didn't hear him through the speaker again. So I'm not sure where we're, where we're missing out here. Nope, can't hear you.
Is Mark able to vote by text messaging in his own?
So. There it goes, his mic is live.
I was aye.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay, whatever, what did we do just there? So that we can do that again for the next vote? Or just leave it like this?
All right, so, uh, item nine B, two B is ordinance number 815, and this is to amend the zoning district for the zoning map. This is the, um, the Barron's Development near the American Legion where we are, um, uh, we're, he is pro, he is transferring, the developer's transferring little slivers of property to the mutual benefit of, of both the Legion and the developer, and frankly, to the benefit of the city. Um, if, just briefly, the, um, original concept behind how the land was set up was to have a cut-through road to go directly east-west, and this transfer allows the American Legion to continue using land that they've been really, uh, enjoying using in the past, and it also creates more of a traffic calming route for the road to go through, so it's not so much of a cut-through. Um, so this was, again, this was unanimously approved for recommendation to the council on March 29th. So I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 815.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
One more time, Mark?
I saw his lips move.
I know. I just got to get him verbally out there. Can you unmute again?
There, now try it.
Did you vote on the other one?
Yep.
All right.
Uh, well, actually, we hear you now. You're going.
I voted aye.
You can, you can, uh, leave yourself unmutated. I think we do a quality of all things here.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
All right, and now this is almost the exact same thing as the last thing, except instead of zoning, this is the same properties, and this is just to approve the physical boundaries instead of the zoning portion of it for the same Barron's and development and the American Legion. So I'll make a motion to approve, um, the amendment of the, uh, physical boundaries for 1014 Canora, Canora Road and 333 North Lapham Peak.
Now, I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I, I do want to make one quick comment, and that is on, um, the last Saturday in March, I had a open house and, um, several people came, and I just want to thank, like, the Barron's people and the folks from Miller Marriott, who, there are a lot of folks who had questions about this and they spent, you know, a couple hours just explaining things. It's, it's, it was wonderful and much appreciated, so, thank you.
And again, any, clearly anybody with questions can reach out to staff or show up at the plan commissioner here, um, in the future, so. Um, and for item D.
Uh, there was no vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting for Mark to vote.
Any other discussion?
We all.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Nothing.
His mic is still muted.
You're unmuted, or you're muted again, Mark. You're muted again. Yep, we can.
Very good.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right, um, so for the item D, this is associated with the Miller Marriott property as well. This is vacation of some properties. I'll let, I'll let, uh, city administrator, uh, Hafner, address specifics on this.
Yeah, so this, uh, item is for the vacation of, uh, uh, one block of Smythe Lane, one block of Farren Lane and the, uh, adjacent alleys, uh, that are in the proposed Beacon Hill Development. If you recall, we did introduce this resolution back in February and we scheduled the public hearing that we held, uh, this evening. And, um, we will be, if approved, uh, we'll be eliminating the segment of, uh, city road, uh, through these blocks and converting them to, um, walking paths, uh, for public accessibility, uh, and then also some, uh, beautification and stormwater features as well. And so, uh, if the city approves of that, the, uh, action would be to, uh, approve resolution 2023-04.
I'll give Tim a break and make a motion to approve resolution 2023-04.
I'll second.
All right, and it, this includes the, the applicant asked about a sign easement. Is that around the entrance or that's later? Oh, I'm sorry, that's later on the agenda.
That's later in the agenda, under new business.
But this does include something to do with the, um.
You chair the planning commission.
I know, I know.
Then now you're, you're all flustered.
No, so this, but doesn't this include a piece that's around the, the gate that enters into the property? Isn't that a little segment of this for the right of way or is that something else?
That's part of the easement that will be.
Oh, darn it, okay. I'm still in favor.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mark? Nope, still can't hear you. There we go.
All right, I do not have anything further on the plan commission, um.
Motion carries.
Meeting. Motion carries, sorry. I'm, I'm trying to get ahead. Um, I don't have anything further on plan commission, other than the fact that, um, similar items, I, I'm not just going to call them housekeeping items because there's different things that come up with these different developments that we're going through right now. So just stay tuned, look at the city, uh, website, sign up to notify me and look at the, look at the agendas. If you want to weigh in on any detail, um, show up. So that's it, that's all I have for plan commission.
Alrighty, thank you very much, Mr. Iker. We'll move on to Lake Welfare Committee, and Mr. Price is not here tonight, so we'll move on to Park and Rec Commission and Tree Board, Mr. Schaefer. All righty, thank you very much, Mr. Iker. We'll move on to Lake Welfare Committee, and Mr. Price is not here tonight, so we'll move on to Park and Rec Commission and Tree Board, Mr. Schaefer.
Oh, can't hear you yet.
That's because there's no meeting, no report.
Hold on. No meeting, no report, excellent.
Awesome. Okay, we'll move on to Public Works, Mr. Grimmer.
No meetings, no report.
All righty, we'll move on to Delahard, back to Mr. Iker.
Our next Delahard Commission meeting is a week from tomorrow, so I don't have anything since that last meeting.
All righty, G Police Commission, Ms. Belli?
We are actually meeting on Wednesday, April 19th, 5:30.
Thank you very much. Library Board, Ms. Henry?
Hi, yeah, we had a meeting last week, and the main thing I wanted to point out is that the library staff is currently working on the strategic plan, and there is a public survey available right now to gather feedback on what things are most important to the community as regards and what programs that the library will try to focus on. So please, if you haven't, fill that out. There's lots of different ways to do it. You can do it in person, you can do it online. And someone will win a $50 gift card to Lumber Inn just for doing the survey. And there is an update in the packet on page 96 of the packet from the library director with some cool information and some updates on the library.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals, I don't believe there's any meeting there. J Promotion and Tourism Commission, Mr. Schaefer? Thank you very much. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, there is no published schedule. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board?
Our next meeting is Wednesday. Our prior meeting, which was two days after the last county council meeting, so almost a month ago, was relatively uneventful. Our revenue is meeting projected budget for the first quarter, and I think we still have three open positions. But again, that was three or four weeks ago. So I'll have a better update after Wednesday.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. We'll move on to M, Dear Management Committee, Ms. Henry?
We did have a meeting last month. However, I was not able to attend to over three minutes.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you. N, Other Committees and Commission and Boards, of which we have none. Could we eliminate N, please? Is that possible? No?
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance. I gotta skip it every time, eh? Okay. 10, Unfinished Business, none. Mayor's Report, just a reminder that from the Planning Commission's perspective, this is the year of the list. And the next Planning Commission meeting, we will be presenting some of those items that are coming off that list for discussion and possible code and ordinance changes. And we'll be having those coming throughout the year. So just another reminder that this is the year of the list. So if you're interested in that kind of thing, please pay attention or read the packets, or come to the meetings, or watch it on TV, or YouTube. Okay, New Business, 12A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Following Easements Necessary For the 2020-2023 City of Delafield Path Projects. Mr. Hafner?
Yeah, so there's four easements being considered tonight. Three of them are for the Genesee's Road Path. Those are the ones with Carriage Hills of Delafield, the Garvin Family, and also Christ the King Lutheran Church. Two of those are just temporary easements for construction. And the Carriage Hills one is a permanent easement. And then the fourth easement under consideration is the Devonshire, for the Devonshire Path, and that's with the Merrick Family. And that is also a temporary limited construction easement just for during construction. And so if the council was interested, they could make a motion to approve all four at once. They could approve all items under 12A, or take them individually.
I'll make a motion to approve item 12A, 1 through 4.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mark?
He keeps trying.
Yeah, I know. Mark, one more time. No.
I heard it.
No, there we go. We got the aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, B, Discussion and Possible Action On a Sign Easement Agreement Between Hendrick's Commercial Properties, St. John's Northwest Military Academy, the City of Delafield, and Gibetti Beacon Hill To Accommodate the Existing St. John's Entrance Sign And Structure at St. John's Road. Tom, please?
Yeah, so this is the infamous agenda item we've been anxiously waiting on. What this does is it's a four-party agreement that basically accommodates the existing St. John's sign that's been there for a long time and allows it to continue to exist. From the city's perspective, the only paragraph that applies to us is paragraph 4, and it basically says that although the sign is located in the public right-of-way, we do permit it to exist in the public right-of-way. And it does state that maintenance responsibilities of the sign are the St. John's responsibility. And so I would recommend approval of the easement.
Just to clarify, the sign are the two stone pillars with the big arching letters over the top. And all four parties work very well together, and the purpose of this is to protect it from all four parties, you know, for various reasons. So that hopefully, this document's going to help make sure it stays there as close to forever as we can make it.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign easement agreement.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mark? One more time?
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to C, Approval of Vouchers.
I'll move to approve the voucher list.
Second. Give that one to Grimmer, it was close. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
All those opposed? Fast. We're getting there. Okay, Reported City Officials, Mr. City Administrator?
Yeah, just two things I wanted to mention. First of all, the public notices in your packet for the dredging permit that the city is seeking from the DNR, and all indications are that we will be receiving that permit in very short order. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, not on the agenda, is just a reminder that we do have the first meeting of the new council tomorrow evening, the organizational meeting. And Molly, can you remind me what time that is?
5:30.
5:30 in this room. So the first meeting of the new council, organizational meeting.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on to B, City Clerk. Got a couple of items there, Molly.
Couple. The election occurred on April 4th. We had, for this type of election, very high voter turnout of 58.7%. That is 3,216 voters out of the 5,538 that we currently have registered prior to the election. We had the Badger Books, which subsequently had the printers working and up, and it was great. We routed everybody through for ballot color and school districts because those were things that printed out very clearly on the tags for the voters to read. So we feel that there was, you know, that really would have helped to eliminate any confusion on what type of ballot color or whatnot voters would have. It went very smoothly. We had virtually no wait all day long. I'm surprised that out of that 3,216, you know, three-quarters of them were in-person voters. So we ran a lot of people through there, and it did not feel like we did the whole day. It was steady, but not clustered at all. The referendum results, as we all are aware, well, not everybody, but most are aware, the referendum did pass by a pretty large percentage. The vote for that was 2,165 yes, 890 no. So that was 3,055 people that partook in that portion of the ballot. So everybody would have received that vote on the ballot, and 3,055 people voted one way or the other. And then the Alder Person District 4 results. We did have one individual receive a large number of write-in votes for write-in candidate. All of the votes are listed online for the... We have two, the EL 106, which is a municipal board of canvasser certification. So they listed all of the folks there. Dirk Wilkins will be joining us tomorrow. He received 30 votes. The next closest was James Langren, and he received 12. So it was more than double the next person in line. What else do I have on my... That is, did anybody have any questions about the election or comments about that before I move on to the next item?
I'll comment quick, and that knowing it was a double-sided ballot, I think I was told three times in line, check both sides of your ballots. So to keep up the communication, I think that was real helpful to make sure. I mean, having, what, 95, 98% of the people vote for that was important. So that was good that people called that out. Good training and the help.
Excellent. Very well-run. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say as well. Very well-run by you as the clerk, and then the board that helps you run it as well. And, you know, I spent a little bit of time there, but every year I usually get some kind of complaint or multiple ones. I got zero this year, which is a wonderful feeling. So congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. We all work very hard, and it's good to know that our hard work is paying off. So moving on to the next item, we last year made a pretty dramatic change in the process for the fish hatchery rentals due to a change in the cleaning service and how we were moving forward with that. Last year, we had already a significant amount of rentals prior to that, already in the system. So I just wanted to update you. At this point, we have 16 events scheduled from May 7th through October 8th, which is on par with, I think, the normal rate of scheduling for that. We kind of, I wanted to let you know I am keeping an eye on it to make sure that we're still kind of getting that revenue, that it's paying for the cleaning, and, you know, we're not losing that interest from the community and utilizing that, the fish hatchery for their events. So we are still, seem to be doing well, and I will keep an eye on it and let you all know if, you know, any suggested fees might need to be adjusted. And then finally, we don't have, well, maybe the mayor received it, but I did want to let you know, the Jenny Townsend, the new administrative clerk, worked with Sean Heinzel on completing the Tree City USA application. And the City of Delafield did earn their 2022 Tree City USA recognition. So that is all.
Sounds good. And just to go back to A, the fish hatchery, I mean, that's one of the... If it's the right size, that's one of the best deals in the area.
I agree. I, you know, so I think we made, I think it's been great for the staff. Everything seems to be running smoothly, so just, I'm happy that that is working out.
Yep. We are too. All right, move down to D, Any Council Requests for Future Agenda Items? If you have one now, or more than one, speak up. Otherwise, reach out to anyone in staff, and we'll get it on for the next agenda. Not tomorrow night, but the one after that. Sounds good. I'll refer you to any correspondence that were in the packet, and I will call the meeting to adjourn at 7:59, seeing no further business. Thank you, everyone.